Good afternoon. It's 4:00 and I will call the May 4, 2020 Salina City Commission Meeting to Order. With that, I would ask for staff's confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we'll move into the roll call.
Mayor Hoppick?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Franz?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
With that, I'd ask those that are able to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hello? Okay, we have no awards and proclamations. Before we move into Citizens Forum, I will turn it over to City Manager Mike Skragg to discuss how we're going to handle everything today.
Thank you, Mayor. We're still using the conference calling bridge format, so that's something that we've been doing for a while now, but as a housekeeping item, we try to review how that works and how callers can participate, and so I'll go through that and provide a little bit of an explanation. We are using what's called a conference bridge. It allows, I believe, up to 150 people to call in and listen to the conversation and also then indicate their interest in commenting as we get to a particular item on the agenda, and we're able to call in them, unmute their phone call, and then allow them to address you. So, the process for that, well, I guess maybe I should back up. First, I do need to verify that all of our technology is working. So, first of all, I need to verify that Scott Gardner is on the line.
I'm here.
Okay. So, Scott, the phone call is working?
Yes.
And is Facebook Live working?
Yes.
And Salina Media Connection, the cable feed?
Yes.
And Salina Media Connection, the online feed?
Yes.
And I need to verify which number you're calling in. It looks like you're calling in on the 5700 number?
Correct.
Okay. I'm going to mute the other city lines and just verify that you're still there. So, Scott, you can still hear us and speak? Nope.
Yep.
Okay, let's try that again. Scott, can you hear us now? I've got three lines that all say City of Salina. Scott, try again.
Yes, I can, and I'll call in on another line as well.
Okay. All right. So, back to the procedural items. For those that haven't already called in, they can call in to participate by calling the number 785-621-0800. They'll be prompted to enter a participant ID number, and that number is 782-956. They'll also be prompted to announce their name, which is optional, but either way, they'll need to press the pound sign to complete that step, and at that point, they'll be in the conference call. I can then see them on my laptop screen, the fact that they're called in, and then when the time comes and we ask for public comment, if they press *9, that will then give me an icon on the screen that indicates that they wish to address you about that particular item. So, at that point, I'm able to unmute them, announce that they're able to address you, and give them the opportunity to make public comment. I would note that there is a little bit of delay depending on which source, if they're watching video rather than listening to the phone call. So, one of the things that we advise is for them to turn their sound down when they're on the phone call, because they'll get conflicting audio from the phone call and whatever other source. So, they do need to turn the sound down. We do need to be mindful to leave a little bit of time for listeners to catch up for our request for them to press *9 to indicate that they wish to speak. So, I'll repeat the numbers one more time. The conference bridge number is 785-621-0800. The participant ID number is 782-956, and then they will need to press *9 when they're prompted if they wish to address you in Citizen Forum or public comment. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. With that, that will lead us into the Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for citizens to call in and comment on items that are not on the agenda.
I believe we do have one interesting caller. Any callers that wish to speak to the City Commission, please press *9 to indicate that you'd like to have an opportunity to speak, and I'll unmute your phone. Okay? Mr. Patel, you're unmuted.
Okay, yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to turn up the volume just a second.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, hi, everyone, and first of all, thanks for allowing me to talk here today. I'm calling on behalf of the all hotel owners here in Salina, local hotel owners. I'm also a hotel owner in town, also on the restaurant in Salina. Now, I requested and I sent an email several times to City Commissioners and Mike as well, and I did discuss with Mike as well regarding my water bill relief issue. We all are going through, you know, very difficult financial and, you know, health-related and mental space and all those things, you know, we are going through, you know, this very difficult time. But especially when it comes to the hospitality industry, which is a hard-heated industry at this point due to, you know, travel restrictions and, you know, people are afraid to travel, people are afraid to stay in another hotel because they have so many concerns. And we have projected, you know, this is the current situation, so we have lost, you know, so much business. You know, if I talk just about my personal business, I have a $500,000 cancellation just in a month for this coming season. So, in nutshell, I have lost, you know, entire summer business. Moving forward, you know, we have projected this whole year is going to be like that, so we are not even going to generate one-third of the year compared to our normal business. If this is the situation for me, it's going to be for everyone in Salina area as well. I'm just talking Salina area. It is everywhere nationwide, but, you know, I'm just specifically talking this time in Salina only. So, we are going to have a very difficult time to survive. We are looking for help. You know, I have contacted, you know, senators, state senators, I have contacted, you know, federal senators, we have contacted, you know, utility departments, we have contacted our appraisal office, we also, you know, contacted city as well to, you know, help wherever we can find the help. So far, we have very little help, you know, from some utilities company, like including the Cox Cable, they have released, you know, several months of bills, so they completely released us from the paying bills. I'm also looking for the same kind of help from the city of Salina for the water bill. And, you know, it will beg help for us as a hotel owner, and if we don't get help, we are in danger to, you know, completely lose the business. So, this is my point today, and I wanted to, you know, make the City Commissioner and City Mayor aware that, you know, we are going through very, very difficult time, and we are begging for the help from the city.
Okay, Mr. Patel.
This is my point today.
Yep. Thank you. I know we have received your correspondence, and I have had some conversations with Mr. Skragg about that, so thank you for calling.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you for, you know, taking my concern, and I wish and I appreciate, you know, taking any favorable action for the hotel owners.
And good luck, and we hope things get better.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I generally try to avoid pushing these type of policy decisions your way, but I think you saw the email correspondence that I had with Mr. Patel and tried to explain that there's no discretion granted in the current code, and to his point, the current code doesn't anticipate a pandemic necessarily, but there's no discretion granted to staff to waive those type of bills, and the email correspondence talked about kind of the precedent-setting nature of granting relief for hotels and everyone else impacted, and that's something that would be a typical decision point for you as a governing body, and I felt a little guilty in doing it, but indicated it really is at the discretion of the governing body. Without further action, there is no opportunity to create any relief, and if that's something the governing body wanted done, they'd have to provide direction to city staff to do that. So, I think he understood. We had a very good conversation. I'm very empathetic to the situation he and a lot of businesses are in, and I was the one that kind of prompted that he had this opportunity to address you directly by calling in today, so.
Thank you, Mike.
I don't, by looking at the names, I don't see anyone else, but I'll make a call for anyone else that wishes to address the City Commission. If so, they need to press *9. Okay, I think that's it.
Okay. We have no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so that will move us into the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of April 22, 2020, and item 6.2, approve the minutes of April 27, 2020.
Do we have any items the Commission would like removed?
No, but I would like to note, as I told Mayor Hoppick and Ms. Wick, that there was an error in the April 22 minutes, and I have let her know that error, and so I think we are, that will be corrected in the final minutes, and I would just like to move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Mayor Hoppick here. I forget, we're supposed to say our names.
Oh, sorry.
Always takes us a while to get used to that. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, items 6.1 and 6.2. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That passes 5-0. With that, we will move into Administration, 7.1.
Item 7.1, authorize the City Manager to sign a request from the Kansas Department of Transportation, KDOT, to exchange 2020 federal funds.
Mr. Stack is moving into position.
Didn't think I'd get to sit in this spot very often. Thank you. This is project, not really a project, some funding we've talked about for the last few weeks with the pandemic and the reduced funding, possibly of sales tax and just the funding levels of the city. This is a nice bonus from KDOT this year that we were able to get a little more money from the Federal Fund Exchange Program. This is an annual program where they give each cities and counties around the state some of the federal dollars that they receive. You're able to use, sometimes in the past, we've used those for a federal project where there's a lot more federal oversight, and they funnel the funds through KDOT. Federal projects have lots of different strings attached, and they're just a lot more, lots of different requirements, I guess, environmental and NEPA requirements, as well as different levels of scrutinizing by the state and the federal government. So, what they've allowed cities and counties to do is to use their funds for more simple projects, which is kind of nice for us, because it is a 10% reduction in the amount that you get, but we believe that is much more made up for, with the different kind of projects that we're able to do much quicker, as well as just the variety of different projects. So, we're able, for this year especially, it really comes in handy because we're able to, you know, just for a pavement sealing project, fairly simple project, but it's just direct dollars that we are able to seal our streets, which from my chair, it's the most basic thing we can do is to seal the streets. That just helps our pothole problems with winters, and if you can't seal them or overlay them or fix them with a lot of money, you can at least seal them with the crack seal stuff, and it doesn't look the best, but it is very effective. It's very rubbery, it shrinks and expands with the different seasons we have, so we felt like that was one of the main projects we had to fund this year. The other one is a storm sewer project that we've been working on for quite a while that is a problem for around the new hotel and the downtown corridor. It's been basically a 100-year-old pipe that we're replacing with the Mulberry Storm Sewer Project, so we're excited to be able to get to still do that. That is eligible under this program. And lastly is the dreaded manholes that we create when we do a lot of street work. It's nice to get the streets done, but the manholes are kind of an afterthought from a certain extent. We're trying to keep those on our forefront a little more, and then this program allows some, quite a few to be fixed this year with this $175,000. So, that's what our proposal this year, to use these federal exchange funds for these three projects. They are on a reimbursement basis, they also have to be projects you can get done fairly quickly, and our annual maintenance program fits this program well, because, yeah, we bid most of these projects in the spring, we have them done in the fall, and then we get reimbursed for them in September, right before the, right when it's due. Basically, we get a nice check from the state, and Debbie really appreciates it, so the city does, thank you. So, that's our, I guess, my main presentation on this, so I would be here for questions.
Okay, questions for Mr. Stack?
My only question, I think, is more directed, Commissioner Hodges here. My only question is probably directed toward Mr. Skragg. Was this exchange fund amount reflected in our earlier discussions on the budget?
Yes.
Basically, the $350,000 windfall?
Correct.
Thank you.
Not only the amount, but these individual projects were what we talked about.
Right.
And then, as one other kind of historical item, I don't know how long we've been doing federal funds exchange, but we've been doing that for a while now, taking advantage of the flexibility, as Mr. Stack described, in return for that 10% reduction.
Yeah, I think I saw someone here, 2011 or something. Does that sound about right?
Correct. That's, I was just looking up. It's been since 2011. That's correct.
Yep.
And the exchange rate has been 90% all of the years except for one, and the one year wasn't quite as good, but they quickly went back to 90%, so it's very beneficial for us and the counties. This year, they said, a lot of the bridge programs around the state, there's, a lot of these dollars go towards bridges, bridge work as well, so they were trying to even up basically county bridge replacement projects and city shares, and they try to keep it even. So, they said this is probably a one-time windfall, but it's, they try to even it up each year, so it fluctuates a little bit each year.
Commissioner Franz, when you say windfall, it's because this amount is larger than what we normally get?
Yes, yes, quite a bit.
Or is this amount something entirely new as opposed to a second distribution?
No, it's just one larger amount. It's, as you can see, kind of our historical, last year, we got 543,000 that we exchanged at 90%, and then the year before that was 564, and kind of it's been around that amount the last, since 2011. The lowest year was, looks like, you know, 450 range, and the highest has been around the 560 range, so it's been around that amount every year, but they also have to, they have to funnel those dollars and get them spent. So, if there is a year where somebody doesn't do a bridge, or the bridge takes longer and they got to wait till the next year, well, then there's money extra, and so they try to redistribute those dollars.
Okay, any other questions? Do we have any callers on the line?
If there are any callers that wish to speak, please press *9 now. Be mindful of being patient for that delay. That was, in one of our meetings, I left here, I thought I kind of killed some time and went in the other room, and I could hear myself speaking as I walked in the other room, so the delay is a little noticeable. I don't see anyone that wishes to speak.
Okay. With that, I will bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we authorize the City Manager to sign a request from the Kansas Department of Transportation to exchange 2020 federal funds.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
Mayor Hoppick, we have a motion and a second to authorize the City Manager to sign a request from the Kansas Department of Transportation to exchange the 2020 federal funds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. With that, we will move to item 7.2.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stack.
Item 7.2, Resolution Number 20-7831, addressing city participation in the Kansas N-95 respirator decontamination program coordinating with Celine County regarding the Kansas N-95 respirator decontamination program and indemnification of Celine County relating to liabilities arising from city participation in the Kansas N-95 respirator decontamination program.
Hey, Mr. Skragg.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This relates to a recent authorization that FEMA gave to the state of Kansas, and Patel Corporation has technology to decontaminate N-95 respirators, and so the technology's been approved at the federal level, and they've indicated that an individual respirator can be decontaminated up to 20 times using their technology. My understanding of the approach is it is a piece of equipment. I believe it's going to be located in Topeka, and there will be appointments scheduled for different counties or different first responders and hospitals within counties to take their respirators to Topeka, have them run through the system, wait while that happens, and then return with their respirators. So, there, I've started to see guidance in terms of labeling the respirators and packaging them in paper bags and delivering them to Topeka. One of the pieces of advice or guidance that came from the state was a recommendation that counties try to coordinate their efforts and rather than have multiple agencies bring items. And so, Celine County reached out, indicated a willingness to be that central point for our first responders as well, and the only thing that they asked is that they have to enter into an agreement with Patel Corporation, and part of that agreement is an indemnification against contamination or any failures, and so they asked that the city indemnify the county in a similar fashion. And so, the resolution that you have is electing to coordinate with the county and indemnifying them in that regard. I think our intention in speaking with the fire chief and the chief of police, we do have masks, FEMA is providing them, and so we're making use of the supply that we have. Our intention would be to hold, once they're used, to hold those back, and if it becomes necessary, then to reuse them after they've been decontaminated, we can start making use of that service. But we kind of hold off on the existing supply that we have as long as we can and see how supplies hold out. But this then would at least create kind of an inventory that we could hold in reserve if needed, and so we thought it would be appropriate and prudent to take advantage of that process. There's no cost associated with this action item, no cost for us to send them to be decontaminated, and the county's not asking for any reimbursement either, so it's purely just approving the resolution as it is written to take the county up on their offer and to indemnify them. I did provide some information, some fact sheets and other information that have been provided to me as it relates to the technology. I don't claim to be an expert, but that is what the state disseminated. So, your options today would be to approve the resolution, approve it with amendments possibly, you could postpone consideration, or you could vote to deny. In the event that you voted to deny, then that would necessitate us possibly executing an agreement with Patel and making our own arrangements to physically deliver our materials to Topeka. So, with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Question from Commissioners?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment, and it's in the form of a thank you to the county for agreeing to coordinate this for our first responders and to the state of Kansas for providing the service and for FEMA, to FEMA for providing this service as well. So, I just want to make sure that everyone is thanked. We really appreciate being able to have the opportunity to reuse the N-95 respirators.
Commissioner Franz, the documentation that came with it indicated that it would be at our option to return the respirator to the same person who submitted it versus coming back as a pool, are we returning them to the same people? I very much would, you know, I understand they've been decontaminated, but for some reason, I feel better if I know that you're going back to the same people that submitted them.
Mike Skragg, understandably so, and part of that guidance that I was talking about was a numbering system so that you could have a number for an individual.
Well, it says we can. I just wanted to know if we were.
Yes, that would be our intention.
Okay. Do we have any callers that would like to weigh in on this?
If we have any callers that wish to speak, please press *9.
With that, I will bring it back to the Commission for action.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Ryan here. I move that we approve Resolution Number 20-7831, addressing the city's participation in the Kansas N-95 respirator decontamination program coordinating with Celine County, their decontamination program and indemnification of Celine County relating to the liabilities.
Commissioner Davis, second. Mayor Hoppick here. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7831. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 5-0. We have no development business that leads us into other business. Do we have any Commissioners that would like to bring something before the group?
I have a few things that I don't know that we would necessarily discuss today, but perhaps are items for future agendas. I was very glad to see that we're down to only having about 25% of our employees who have not been able to get into the shared work program. I didn't see, one department I didn't see on here was municipal court, and I went back and checked, and they do have a couple people that are on work share, and I didn't know if we were, are we the point person for the municipal court employees, or are they doing something on their own?
We are. If I could back up a little bit in terms of the work sharing by way of an update, we submitted 20, we have to do it by work unit, so we submitted 26 plans. We received approval of 15 pretty quickly. We submitted it on a Thursday and received confirmation over the weekend. That left us 11 that have yet to be approved, and municipal court was not one in that list. The reason for municipal court is we're taking a furlough approach while court is not in session, and so the work share wouldn't actually take effect for a week or two yet, because they had postponed their court cases to May 18. Fortuitously, that matches up, if the health numbers work out correctly, to the next level of mass gathering, so it kind of synchronizes nicely in terms of the number of people that would need to be in the courtroom. So, we've had conversations, we have a work share plan that we'll prepare and submit between now and then for municipal court, for the two employees there. Furloughs have already been submitted, and they're in process. So, with respect to the remaining 11, we've had multiple communications with the state over the week, over the weekend, the first 15, this may be more detailed than you want, but the first 15, we received approvals, and it's pretty evident exactly which work unit was approved, and they had numbers, 1 through 15. We received indication that we should have something yet this morning on the remainder. They confirmed they had all the necessary information, and we received approval of 25 and, number 25 and 26. So, that leads us to believe that they might have approved all the rest of them, the approvals are just forthcoming, but Natalie Fisher, the HR Director, continues to be in contact, leaving voicemails and emails and having a little bit of disjointed conversation with them as if it's imminent, but we just don't have that final confirmation. So, we're hopeful that any day now, we should have confirmation on the remainder. Staff has been made aware that, you know, this week, whenever we receive confirmation, we'll go ahead and implement. If it's unit by unit, we'll implement those. If it is midweek, we'll go ahead and try to implement, if at all possible, yet this week. So, things are moving forward, and it's a little disjointed, but we're waiting on the state's final confirmation.
Thank you. I really appreciate that update, and I appreciated receiving it in the City Managers' update that we all receive, and if possible, I think in order to disseminate the information, it would be great if not, if we could get a weekly update somehow out so that not only, you know, our employees, but people in the community understand where we're at in terms of our staffing and our employees.
Can I follow up on that?
Sure.
Mike, would it be, Mayor Hoppick here, would it be advantageous to go ahead and submit the work
submit the work share program for municipal court, knowing that we had the delay on this last one? And can you put a date to be, or you know, put the May 18th date or date to be determined if that's extended the 30?
I don't exactly know. Natalie Fisher, our HR Director, would probably know the answer to that, but we did talk about having that prepared and ready to submit, so it's in the works.
Since this one's taken a while and I know that the state's, you know, been inundated with claims, so.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, no. Great, great, great question. Commissioner Hodges here. A couple of other things that related to that in some sense because their COVID-affected things are our facilities and our programming. There was mention of that again in the city manager update, which I appreciated, but as I'm sure all of us have been getting the same emails and phone calls about the municipal golf course, about Barclay Park, and about Kenwood Cove. At least from what I'm getting, those seem to be the top three. The city manager update indicated that at this point, we're not hiring any seasonal employees. So, when will a decision be forthcoming on some of those things?
Right. Actually, my intention as part of other business was propose to you that next week, staff come back with an update on finances as well as kind of some of the feedback that we've had. In all honesty, you passed a resolution, a couple of things. Our budget projections assume no part-time staffing expenses and I think we were pretty clear in our conversation about the extent of what that would look like. And you passed a resolution authorizing the city manager to implement part-time staffing levels. And so, I've yet to proceed for a couple of reasons. Number one, trying to see how the health aspects of all this shake out and also waiting to see what the reopening plan from the governor looked like. I think I shared with some of you, I didn't want to proceed with anything in terms of a determination and then have the governor make an announcement and have people presume, well, the governor trumps the city manager, right? That wipes out whatever the city manager might have just announced. So, we've been working on a press release as it relates to the work sharing aspects and the impacts on our staffing. If you walk through the building, we've got signage that indicates a Monday through Thursday schedule for offices. And so, we're working on a press release that kind of walks through, hopefully not in too much detail, but the process that we went through as a group to work through our budget and the impacts that has on our staffing and why we're going to a Monday through Thursday office schedule. That, we're ready to roll out. In addition to the items that you mentioned, getting quite a bit of feedback about just special events in general, to Mr. Patel's point, you know, the impacts of those events on tourism and hotel stays, as well as a lot of feedback about tournaments, sports tournaments, baseball and softball in particular, now that the governor's come out with some language and a timeline as relates to pools and sporting activities, that's created even a more heightened expectation that we now have guidance about how that can proceed. So, I'm still trying to track down through the league and otherwise, if the expectation is that, yeah, the pool can be open, but it's still subject to a mass gathering limit of 10, 30, or 90 and social distancing and whether that's the case for sporting events as well. I hope to have the answer by the time we come back next week. But my suggestion was going to be recognizing that you are getting those calls, I'm getting those calls too, and it's a balancing of different concerns. I'd like to kind of try to lead you through some of that conversation next week, get additional confirmation from you before I proceed much further. We have had some conversations with golf course staff. They've done quite a bit of work trying to be creative in terms of their scheduling, their cost estimating and their revenue estimating. I tasked them with another level of detail and follow-up on questions in that regard. In all honesty, I told them and the finance staff, this may be an exercise to see which scenario loses less money as it relates to the golf course. But if, you know, if that's the case, that's a decision point that we might need to address. As it relates to special events and sporting tournaments, that type of thing, I think it possibly is a conversation about while it may not make it to the city's bottom line dollar for dollar, I don't, we'll do our best to try to estimate cost on the city side, but trying to quantify for you what additional expense investment might be necessary to then facilitate, you know, an event. KKOA Ledslid is another example. It hasn't come up a whole lot in conversation, but that's as bigger, bigger than the River Festival. It's in July. The other thing that I would tell you is I think a lot of people are zeroing in on those dates as if they're fixed dates when they're actually very health oriented and I don't know what to expect in terms of how the governor will apply herself and the administration will apply themselves as it relates to interpretation of health information. Had some conversations that seems likely with the heightened testing will have an increase in positive results, just even if it's in proportion, just that additional testing will result in possibly more positives. But I don't know that that's a deciding factor in and of itself in terms of the governor or the health department for that matter. As you might have noticed, the reopening plan was very clear that that is the state guidance and local jurisdictions, county health departments can't be more lenient, but they can be more restrictive. I don't have any reason to expect that, I don't have any additional information, I don't want to start a rumor that they plan to be more restrictive, but as more health information comes, becomes available, all those timelines are going to be under continued review. So that then impacts our projections as well. Additionally, there is some, you know, I know I've told you multiple times and you're already aware of this, but the sales tax data that is coming out is two months in arrears. It is, it does exceed last year's year-to-date numbers. However, it was already included in the projections that we provided. We went back and looked at that. Sales tax while it is up is, only varies $1,800 from the projection that we provided for the basis of our conversation. There are other data points that we're starting to get, whether it's EMS or property tax or permits and fees. So, we might be able to supplement, you know, what we know a little bit more by next week. Some of those numbers are below our project, we projected them to be down and they appear to be lower than we had projected them, so, but that's preliminary. I would tell you that with as short staffing as we were running in the last month and with people working from home or staying home, you know, not everything has been deposited and recorded. We've got to get that caught up and then we might have good numbers. So, that's a long way of saying, yeah, I agree. The conversation understandably and predictably is starting to pick up. I think quarantine fatigue is setting in, people, that expectation that we're coming out of it, so let's get back to normal without the recognition of the financial impacts is starting to drive the conversation and I certainly don't want to get ahead of you. The last thing I want to do is act on stale information from a conversation a while ago, implement that and then have this pendulum swinging back and forth where we're having conversations. I'd much rather have that conversation with you as a governing body and give you an opportunity to be as informed as you can and provide some feedback.
And I appreciate that and I think citizens know that we've got a public safety aspect to these decisions, but we've also got financial considerations, so, but it's your thought that we may be able to at least address some of these facilities and whether or not we're, I mean, obviously, we need detail on, you know, revenue-driven facilities like Kenwood Cove and the muni, but that's a conversation you're anticipating that we'll be able to have next week?
Yes, that represents quite a bit of work on staff's part. What my vision would be is that we would do our best to model, you know, segment by segment, topic by topic, what added expense might be involved to make that service available and then help you make an informed decision. And I'll tell you right now, I don't have any reason to think that I'm going to come to you with a revenue and expenditure balanced approach. It's going to be more if we want to do this, here's likely what it would cost and then you can make a cost benefit decision.
Commissioner Davis, but the first cog in that decision tree has got to be the health aspect.
Absolutely.
I don't care what constituent is, you know, what business we're trying to help out. If all we do is, you know, throw ourselves over the edge of the cliff a month later, you know, we haven't really helped anybody and we're going to be in a much worse financial state three months from now. And we planned, you know, a 90-day siege. If we're not careful, it becomes a 150-day siege or 180-day siege.
Commissioner Ryan here. Just as that we've been very conservative in protecting the budget and prudent, I'd like to have those options on the table to know that if, you know, I'd like to believe people are going to social distance and take the precautions and we won't have that spike. But, and if we can get to that point, I'd like to have the options before me. So, we mentioned Barclay Park and then municipal golf course. I'm interested in seeing that scenario for baseball to come forward, at least at the club, you know, the little league type of level. I think there's a lot of volunteer aspects to that that won't require as much of our staffing if we can manage it to that.
Mike's Craig, as you mentioned those, I'd be remiss if I didn't add recycling to that list as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I, yeah, I forgot to, Commissioner Hodges, I'm sorry, I forgot to, recycling's another hot button issue.
Commissioner Franz, any comments?
Oh, Commissioner Franz here. I would agree with Commissioner Davis in that the public health aspect and also Commissioner Hodges is the first thing we have to consider, but I think it's also very important that everybody recognize that the financial fallout from that is going to extend well beyond resolution of that public health issue. And I'm not sure, we're all kind of focused on coming out of this kind of stay-at-home, quarantine kind of situation and everybody wants things to return to normal. You know, I think we need to be aware that, you know, we may not be able to afford to do all of that come August, September, October, when we're starting to feel the financial impacts. We did get, I think, a little bit ahead of the curve by trying to address that early on before we started seeing the impacts and hopefully that will be helpful. I would like to see some movement towards some activity, you know, maybe Barclay Park, for example, if you sign it appropriately and just, I know we can't police it, but it would be an area where we could maybe establish some normalcy. So, I, it, I'm really troubled by the pressure to return all of our programs to normal. I'm troubled by saying we might hire part-time people back for some of these programs when we've got full-time people still on furlough or on work sharing and we need those people to do programs that are pretty basic to what we do. I have trouble balancing all of that and I think we need to have quite an extended discussion about all of the, all of the implications that might have for us going forward. It's just very, it's a very uncomfortable situation to be in.
Mike's Craig, I share your discomfort. That's why I didn't make the decision unilaterally. This is very difficult.
Mayor Hoppick here and I've had the discussion with the city manager about some of this and that's why I thought that it needed to come before us, even though we gave him some leeway in the, in our resolution. And again, I think we need to look at what the potential, if there is a potential loss to running certain programs, what that is, because there is a certain quality of life and there are certain, you know, things that the public expects us to provide and I think we have to look at and weigh that, you know, is, you know, what is that loss? It may, it may come down to we're asking those participating to be more involved in, I'm just going to use for simplicity, baseball. They may have to chalk their own fields, you know, or they get a group that helps do that or, you know, whatever we're doing. We need to, we may have to balance things a little bit. And then I know later on in the summer, there's some activities that come to the community that are financially very important to our hotels, our restaurants and that type of thing that maybe cost us as a community some money and we're going to have to try to weigh that too. And those are things that I think we're just going to have to do as a commission and, but I think the sooner we start trying to weigh that, the better off we are, so.
Commissioner Davis, you know, it's good to have a list of options. Each one of us probably has our pet project we want to open, you know, for me, it's going to be recycling. I mean, you'd think the dog park would be an easy one to figure out, but you know, some states have already begun to open up and I would hope that some governors and states that haven't opened up are sitting back and just saying, well, if those folks want to be the guinea pigs and be the experiment, more power to them. We're just going to wait and see what happens 30 days after they've opened up, because that's going to be enough time if there's going to be a second wave that'll show up. You know, and promising things to folks before we have, you know, word from the governor, let alone our own local jurisdiction, may lead to more disappointment down the road. You know, you could give a provisional reservation for a baseball field in, at the end of August, but you know, the fine print has to say contingent upon and, you know, list all these things. I'm usually fairly optimistic, but my optimism here is only if we play this right. And there's still a lot of folks out here who just don't seem to get it yet. And we don't see large numbers here because we're not testing a lot of people. People might be a little more afraid if they realize, oh, 20% of the people in my block have this. What do you know? Okay, maybe I will wear that mask when I walk the dog.
Mike's Craig again and that prompts a handful of talking points. With respect to the finances and the budget, I want to stress, we don't even know what our margin of error is on the numbers that we provided you previously. So, I'm very reluctant to just say that's the number dead on and anything else we want to do is, you know, that's what's going to hit our bottom line. As things fluctuate from our projections to our work sharing to, you know, we're already running into difficulties in terms of scheduling that cause us to have to back away from individual work sharing arrangements and that'll impact the number. So, we got a hefty margin of error just in terms of the financial estimating we've already done is one thing. With respect to, you know, going first, I posed that question on one of the calls that I was on and a lot of times they refer to it as the canary in the coal mine and the response was Kansas is not far enough behind to have, there's no one far enough in front of Kansas to serve as the canary in the coal mine, but we'll have to monitor that and see. With respect to, and your example is a good one of the reservations, the contingent reservations. One thing that we have done based on, you know, what we've already talked about is we've not been taking reservations where other communities have been, you know, kind of proceeding as if the governor's reopening plan is the date and they'll take reservations and then they'll deal with them later. We've, we've kind of taken the other approach. Without some change in our directive and our staffing, we are not prepared to, you know, take reservations for sporting activities and things like that. That has gotten to me as kind of a disconnect compared to other communities. So, there's that. And then lastly, my intention wouldn't, is not that we change course, it is that you have enough information and, you know, you can make some prioritized decisions and it would all be still contingent on, you know, hitting the health numbers. Oh, the other thing that I would say is as we talk about being hopeful for social distancing, I think the vast majority of that is the case, but I would tell you that we found it necessary to install plywood on the basketball goals in the park because they're welded to the backboards and that was then disassembled by basketball enthusiasts and we had to take our efforts to the next level to prevent basketball. So, I think human nature is they want to get out, they want to get back to normal and we're not able to police all that, but voluntary compliance is less than 100%. I guess I'd put it that way.
Commissioner Franz here, if I could address Mayor Hoppick's comment. I too have had, you know, I will be much more amenable to moving forward with some of these programs if, as he pointed out, we can get the folks who want to do that to take on some of the responsibility that our additional seasonal staff used to be required to do. That would be very helpful in terms of my assessment of that moving forward, simply because of the cost limitations. You know, and again, the health aspect is greatly concerning to me. I mean, you know, if you look at... I mean, you know, if you look at the new case count in Kansas over the last two weeks, it has absolutely spiked. Now, that being said, it is largely due to, I think, four counties where, and I hope I'm not misspeaking, but where the meatpacking plants are prevalent and people are in very close contact to each other. We don't have a similar facility in Saline County, but it does speak to what happens when you have constant close contact with this sort of virus. It is very easy to pass, and I think we, everybody needs to remain cognizant of that.
Mike's Craig again. Sorry to keep piling on, but you raise another good point that I think might be worth sharing. I'm currently in conversations with an event scheduled for this weekend that wants permission. They have participants coming from multiple states. They have proposed a format where they can observe social distancing. We have travel quarantine guidance from KDHE if you, someone from particular states. They've indicated that they don't typically have anyone from those states, and they will just turn people away from those states. What we don't have is any guidance as it relates to individual hotspots within the county and within the state. So there's nothing that prevents anyone from Johnson County or Ford County or whatever from coming to Saline County today, but in talking with the county, I don't believe I have any ability to turn down that permit. They, they're not needing any additional services from us, they just want to use a city facility. And so they've committed to putting measures in place to try to observe social distancing and the mass gathering limitations, but it, I spent quite a bit of time trying to staff through what the KDHE guidance and regulations were, as well as the county, for all of those concern reasons that you just mentioned.
Commissioner Hodges here. Something that Commissioner Franz said earlier also resonated with me, and I wanted to follow up on it, in terms of hiring temporary workers for select programs or facilities before we've restored our full-time employees and trying to achieve that balancing act. And something that we had talked about a few weeks ago when we were looking at financial projections was going back and reviewing some of our contracts with outside agencies. And I was wondering if that could be on the agenda for next week. I know it sounds, I mean, it sounds pretty meaty, but I've taken a look at a couple that I could find online, and I don't see any, like, force majeure provisions there, but I think that it, I think it's a discussion that merits having, especially as, you know, we're struggling to make our own hourly workers whole.
Yeah. Mike's Craig, I don't disagree. The reason I chuckled is, that's the thing that has kept falling off my plate, is I've tried to deal with, you know, the more immediate opening the building up and getting communication out to staff. But it is definitely on my mind that that is a task that you've asked me to do and I need to get on. In committing to facilitating the conversation next week, that's a whole nother block of time. I'll do my best, but I don't know how far I'm going to make it on the contract side of things. I haven't forgot about it. I'm not saying it doesn't have merit, I'm just having a hard time getting everything in right now.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd appreciate it, and I hope it can happen. And then Commissioner Hodges here. My final thing, I swear to God, you guys, you had some information about the Fieldhouse floor in your city manager's update, and I thought that that might be helpful to share with the public at large.
Sure. Mike's Craig again. The agreed-upon solution to the concrete cracking in the Fieldhouse floor was installation of, they call it luxury vinyl tile, but a tile system. And they gave us, they gave us warranty information, doing it at the cost of the contractor, extending the warranty. We went through an agreement, executed an agreement, and selected a floor pattern and tile. Well, we selected hexagon tiles. It was a pattern that kind of seemed to rise to the top aesthetically, and what we didn't anticipate is, and what we found out after they installed the hexagon tiles, is the manufacturer, Shaw Flooring, did individual colors of hexagons, and one batch of hexagons were not completely uniform with another batch. And so as they installed them, and they had torn everything up, and they had the glue down, so they felt like they needed to finish the project, they couldn't just leave the glue uncovered without tile. But as they were installing the hexagons, they realized that that irregularity, not only was it creating an issue where they joined, it was carrying itself through that hexagon pattern. If you had more of a typical rectangular tile or hardwood flooring, you can kind of make up that individual gap pretty quickly as you're installing the tile. But in a hexagon format, it just perpetuated itself across the floor. So contractor, subcontractor, contractor, flooring manufacturer, all acknowledged that that was not acceptable, came together with a plan, basically told us, you know, pick whatever replacement you would like. We did feel like we got an opportunity of sorts. The pattern we picked was pretty light, and it became apparent that it showed tracking more than we expected just after a routine use of a weekend. So we shared with you, I shared with you in my city manager's update, the alternate tile is thicker, the warranty would be the same, it's a no-cost change order, it is no longer hexagon, and it's a darker pattern that ties in with the grays and some of the colors in the building and should not show foot traffic as much. So that's all, I signed off on that change order. It's underway. The fact that the Fieldhouse is not in use makes it a little bit easier to get the installation done, and so it should be starting shortly.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And I don't want to, there was a lot of work, there were a lot of hard conversations about how we got there and what we're going to do to make sure it doesn't happen again. In addition to just the flooring, we've agreed to a floor prep plan, an installation plan, and a quality control plan to try and drive that point home.
Commissioner Davis, just two things. Been some requests that among city services that we can get up and running when possible. Planning Commission and building inspections or project inspections, like home remodels, regular construction. Because the construct, a lot of the, obviously, the construction stuff is outdoors. It would theoretically potentially be easier to address the social distancing aspect. But the construction business is one business which is still working, so it's keeping city employees working, and obviously building suppliers are, I hope, generating some sales tax somewhere in town. But it just, on your long list of services that citizens would like restarted, what's the official status of anything that's in front of the Planning Commission now?
We put off Planning Commission meetings, we've been monitoring the deadlines. The Development Services Director, Lauren Driscoll, and I have had a conversation, and our intention is to, for items that aren't, we don't anticipate generating extensive public comment, to begin conducting Planning Commission meetings like we're conducting the City Commission meetings. And so we're, I think, May 18th is the target date for the first Planning Commission meeting, and we've got an action item or two for it. With respect to, and I should say, while we're under the Safer at Home order, we were very short-staffed in the Development Services Department, but we communicated our willingness to conduct inspections with the exception of interior of occupied residences. So we made staff available for construction-related inspections, and I wasn't aware of, you know, any shortfalls there necessarily. But we, from a health standpoint, with the reopening and the workshare plan, we have more staff on, you know, available than we did under the Safer at Home order, so we should be able to pick up inspections. We won't be at full staffing, and so with respect to meetings, we're going to be coming back to you with a proposed meeting schedule that is not as frequent to kind of allow staff the opportunity, get a packet produced and get it out and be prepared for meetings and keep up with the rest of the work, given our lessened staffing levels. But we should, I don't know that it'll be next week, but I asked Lauren to prepare a resolution to kind of set those meeting dates for your consideration.
All right. And just one, just that morbid curiosity, should the topic come up for discussion? What types of water bills, as far as dollars, are we talking about for a typical hotel?
We took a look at that, and they range from about $800 to $2,000 a month is what we saw, and there are, I think, about 40 to 45 hotels. Now, some of those hotels are long occupancy format, but it really kind of varies. We did not inventory all the hotels and total that number, but they just, kind of a grab sample, that's what we saw.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, I guess, the conversation about meetings reminds me of one other item. We've looked at meeting, you know, the meeting format that we're conducting. I think I shared with you the county's intention. In fact, you can see there are no chairs in the room, and their intended format is to kind of meet like we are here, but then have public meet in 107B, the side room, and 109, watch the meeting on a monitor, and then if they wish to speak to the county commission, they can come in and sit on the bench and observe social distancing, I think have the opportunity to address them from the podium there. We talked about it as staff and talked with the legal counsel about it as well. The concern that we have, I think, and I'm assuming, but I think the county is, can more predictably know that they're not going to have a mass gathering issue with the attendance at their meeting. I think that's their assumption. I'm not prepared, you know, we know on certain Mondays, we can pack the house, and so our concern was that if we find ourselves in a situation where we have too many, and we tell them they can't be in the room or the building because of mass gathering limitations, we've created the presumption of their ability to address you in a public meeting format that we can't meet, and we would need to advise you to adjourn the meeting and reschedule in that scenario. So given our propensity for, you know, a number of people that might attend, we're intending to continue this format and this technology until we can see a little bit more in terms of mass gathering number change or just additional options. I would tell you, too, we have looked at the format that other communities have used. Quite a few of them are using Zoom meetings, Facebook Live, things like that. From what I've been able to see, I sincerely believe that our approach facilitates public comment more so than some of those approaches. A lot of those approaches are turning off chatting or telling citizens they need to submit written comments in advance, which doesn't really give them the opportunity to kind of react to the conversation that's going on. So it may be a little clunky, and there certainly is a delay in the audio, no doubt, but my sense is, this is, while it's not required to allow the public the opportunity to comment, this is more consistent with our past approach in terms of allowing people to call in and participate as a citizen. So until we can find a format that kind of meets that bar, intending to continue the approach that we're using right now.
Okay. Any other business?
Mayor Hoppick, in my introductory comments, I failed to explain how executive, how we'll address executive session, so I do need an opportunity to do that at some point.
Go ahead.
Mike's Craig again. With respect to executive session in this conference bridge calling format, what we've done in the past and what we would do again today if we go into executive session, is the, all the technologies will essentially be put on hold. The conference call will stay live, and people can stay on the conference call, it'll just be put on hold. The conference phone will be muted so that they don't hear the deliberations that are going on in the executive session. The motion will indicate a time that will be in executive session. So when that time is up, we'll come back out and either resume public business, or we will have to make another motion to extend executive session. Similarly, the Facebook Live feed, the YouTube Live feed, and the Sliney Media Connection feeds will all indicate that we are in executive session. They will be muted so that there is no audio or video from our deliberations while we're in executive session going out, and then they'll all be resumed once we come back into public session.
Okay. How long do we need for executive session?
I would say 45 minutes.
All right. Mayor Hoppick, Commissioner Davis. I move the city commission recess into executive session for 45 minutes to discuss with legal counsel certain yet-to-be-negotiated details regarding negotiations with Saline County arising from previously negotiated general terms of the anticipated long-term leasing of the Expo Center by Saline County, based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-7319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at 5:50?
5:53.
5:53?
Yep.
All right. And I need a second on that.
A second?
Mayor Hoppick here. We have a motion and a second to move into executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll be in executive session for 45 minutes.
Okay, I'm going to mute the call. The call will remain live, so callers can remain on. Scott, that he was on the line, and so I need to unmute him.
Is this device muted?
I think it's live. Scott, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so the phone is working. Are you able to confirm that Facebook Live is working?
Yes, it is.
And Sliney Media Connection cable and online?
Give me a few seconds there. There's about a 30-second delay.
Okay.
Okay, we are out of executive session and back into regular session of our May 4, 2020 Salina City Commission meeting. Do we have a motion from the commission?
Mayor Hoppick, I would move that we approve the draft lease agreement between the City of Salina, Kansas, and Saline County, Kansas, for the Saline County Expo Center, and forward that on to our county counterparts for their review.
Commissioner Davis, second. Mayor Hoppick here. We have a motion and a second to approve the lease agreement with, between the City of Salina and Saline County as to the Saline County Expo Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0, and we'll direct staff to forward that on to the county. Mr. Binkston, did you have?
Yes, my, Mayor and Commissioners, just a quick conversation with Mr. Scrag. We will certainly make the modifications and prepare to deliver that to the Saline County folks as quickly as possible, and the thought was to go ahead and post it to the city's website as well, so that anyone interested in the document that's being transmitted to the county would have easy, quick access to it. That sounds like a plan. That's what we'll do.
Okay, with that, I would accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's the way we turn.